At the notice, this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act of Superdollar Law nineteen seventy-five, Chapter two-three-one. This agenda is complete to the extent known, and was sent to the Trenton Times, Trentonian newspapers, posted on the first floor holding board in the City Hall, filed in the City Court's office, and posted to the city Trenton website. Formal action will be taken. Council President, would you like to take a moment to make some quick remarks? God of the universe, look down with favor upon those he resemble, and bestow thy guidance upon members of the governing body in their deliberations. Discreet asking thy name, amen. Roll call. Councilwoman, please. Vice President Feliciano.
President.
Councilwoman Figueroa, paper.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilwoman Harrison.
Present.
Councilwoman Williams.
Present.
Council President.
Present.
Present.
So, President, present. Lieutenant Bridges, present. And Mr. Echolos, present. On your call, Council President.
See.
Certainly. Council President, I understand we have some presentations and recommendations today.
Yes.
Our first one I have listed is Mr. Jermaine White Jr. And if you'd like to, uh, come and applaud his presence as present, or for that matter, if you'd like to read this, uh, resolution.
If you could applaud me, as I'm here, please, and I'm vice president, and I have a brother who is a captain, and I'm the court judge.
Excellent.
Okay, that's good. Good evening, Mr. President.
Uh, actually, I think I'm using your, uh... Certainly.
As I am.
It's up to you, would you like to...
Oh, yes.
No problem. The resolution, the City Council, City of Trenton, Resolution Honoring Jermaine White Jr. Whereas, the Trenton City Council wishes to recognize Mr. Jermaine White Jr. for a variety of creative, innovative, exemplary volunteer work, as well as contributions to the teenage and young adult community in the city of Trenton. And whereas, at the age of ten, Jermaine began volunteering with the North Trenton Ladies Association at the community feeding. Mr. White founded his niche and began to complain in various community events. Jermaine volunteered at Rivera, Rivera Middle School, and helped his father to establish Don't Shoot Guns Shoots, a summer program that transports youth to local basketball courts to learn basketball skills free of charge. And whereas, after graduating middle school at the age of fourteen, Mr. White started his own summer camp program for sixteen-year-olds. Mr. White's program took young kids to Trenton to pool, skating, Six Flags, the New Jersey State Museum, and Trenton Police and Fire Departments, where they learned as alcohol enforcement and first responders. And whereas, Mr. White now invented ways to fund his efforts, creating his own brand of hot sauce that raised money to support his first annual toy drive, where he purchased two hundred and fifty toys in December of twenty twenty, when the COVID pandemic. Jermaine staged this toy, toy, toy week away at the North Trenton Garden Page that included pictures of Santa Claus, Santa Claus and Mrs. Claus. And Mr. White also finished the year strong, having organized the community feeding. And whereas, Jermaine remains hardworking, raising money to pay and distribute care packages for homeless. Jermaine's father took to the streets to help clean up after the disturbance following the death of George Floyd. In September of twenty twenty-one, he organized a back-to-school arcade providing outdoor bags, school supplies, along with school uniforms. Jermaine also hosted his second toy drive in December of twenty twenty-one at his alma mater, Rivera Middle School. Now therefore, be resolved, the City, the City Council of the City of Trenton, County of Mercer, State of New Jersey hereby acknowledges Mr. Jermaine White for his many deeds of giving and caring throughout the city of Trenton. Jermaine is truly a role model, an example for adults, young and old, in our city.
So, Jermaine, on behalf of the City Council, we are so proud of you and thankful to you for all your efforts that you have done for the city, that you continue to do for the city. I am a personal witness, I love and see it myself on many occasions, and that you do selflessly to help those in the city of Trenton. I'm a Trenton Central High School student. I am very proud of you and everything that you have done, the things that you will do. I encourage, right, because this is what Trenton looks like. This is what we want. That will come to the forefront and say, not only myself, but I am going to do it because it is the right thing to do. It is only right that we applaud you, that we encourage you, that we uplift you. So it is my pleasure, along with my wonderful council colleagues here today, that we salute you and we thank you. Can someone put a phone in my phone?
I would like to say thank you to my parents, also, and thank you to everybody for coming. Thank you to all the work from the military organization. Without them, this wouldn't be. I would continue to help more kids, get more kids involved. Um, this is truly a blessing, I thank you.
I'll build you a camera to the back.
Yes.
Thank you, Pam, for instilling all that you have in me. Fantastic, we need to celebrate more like that. Thank you so much.
Let's bring by the members of Montella's Crown to come forward. It is our honor today to present the following to this dynamic group of people who put joy together to do wonders in our community. Whereas, the Trenton City Council wishes to recognize Montella's Crown, a five oh one secret faith-based nonprofit charitable organization whose mission is to educate, transform, and empower women, youth, and seniors through advocacy, community service, intergenerational and multi-generational programming, music, and the arts. And whereas, Montella's Crown was founded in March of twenty twenty by its sisters Kara Butler and Melanie Clayton after the passing of their mother, Montella Clayton. The organization is dedicated to addressing the social, emotional, health, and wellness needs of senior citizens, youth, and young women in underserved urban communities, including the city and greater Trenton area. And whereas, since its inception, the organization has serviced over two hundred-plus senior citizens, women, and young girls in the city of Trenton and greater Trenton area by addressing food insecurities, promoting financial fitness, and therapeutic art for women and teenage girls through their women's fellowship group, Unbroken Women. And whereas, Unbroken Women provides a safe, loving, and nonjudgmental environment through discussion groups, workshops, and creative activities. The objective is to create a self-healing community for women, teenage girls, and senior citizens, bridging the intergenerational and multi-generational gaps. And whereas, Vons Seasoned Seniors addresses the social and emotional needs of the senior citizen population through intergenerational and multi-generational activities. And whereas, Montella's Crown team members are fully proficient, skilled, and well-tempered. Four of the team members have bachelor's degrees, two hold bachelor's of science degrees, and a plethora of certifications, not limited to criminal justice, pre-law, human services, business administration, information technology, advanced cultural competency counseling, youth development, and justice. Now therefore, be resolved that the City Council of the City of Trenton, County of Mercer, State of New Jersey hereby acknowledges Montella's Crown for its contributions to women, youth, and seniors in the greater Trenton community, fostering a safe, favorable care, support, and development. Congratulations to all of you. I just want to say that the work that you do, right, and the work that you're going to do is going to reach and teach and touch and bless so many people. I am honored to be a part of Montella's Crown. I knew your mother personally, and am blessed and honored to have served with her and to carry on the work for each and every one of you, right? I encourage you to keep doing the work, fighting the good fight, to keep pressing forward, because your work is and will make tremendous impact and difference in our city. God bless you. On behalf of the executive director, myself, the chief operating officer, in my absence, my sister Melanie Clayton, our board directors, and my family that stands behind me, thank you, Council President, the distinguished councilmen, councilwomen, councilmen, and my friend and sister, Crystal Feliciano, thank you, I love you, mama. And we are standing in the gap for our seniors. COVID nineteen has changed the narrative and the trajectory of how our seniors are dealt with. And tomorrow is Montella's Crown, the three years, the day that we hear our names. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. See, my family is royal purple. One, two, three.
One, two, three. Montella's Crown!
This is what I'm here, here. So in your absence, there were two other honors taken, and one you honor, the honors due, even with the people that are present. So, this is the city of Trenton, Resolution Honoring Mariah Williams, Mariah Ware. Whereas, the city of Trenton wishes to recognize this Mariah Ware for many contributions and tireless efforts to help the elderly in those in need within the city of Trenton. And whereas, Ms. Ware is a graduate of Trenton Public School System, where she also began working as a nursing aide. Ms. Ware continued her career at Mercy County G F, Chariots and Chats Hospital in Hamilton, New Jersey, where she retired after twenty-eight years of service. And whereas, Ms. Ware's career became her home, helping those that couldn't help themselves. Honor the words of her mother, when you extend your hand to someone in need, the Lord will bless you. And whereas, in two thousand and eighteen, Ms. Ware accepted a position as president of the Wolling Workers of Jerusalem Missionary Baptist Church, served the great Trenton community with meals, groceries, and clothing every month. The Wolling Workers also hold toy drives and provide clothing, quilts, packs, and warm meals to the community. Now therefore, be resolved, the city of Trenton, the city and the city council members in the state of New Jersey hereby recognize Ms. Ware for a life's work, a caring. She is an, she's an ever-bright, shining light, a beacon of hope, a caring, and a symbol for all of us to remember, to help one another. Thank you, Ms. Ware, for being in us. So many can tell the next, uh, honoring, uh, I still want to honor her, even though she's been honored several times. Um, she holds a personal spot for me, so, um, I still go in this book as history mark, which one I brought as big to honor her. So the city of Trenton, City Council, the city of Trenton Resolution, honors Clara Clayton Sampson.
Yeah.
Whereas, the city, excuse me, whereas the Trenton City Council wishes to recognize Ms. Clara Clayton Sampson for her many contributions and tireless efforts to help those in need within the city of Trenton. And whereas, Ms. Sampson started the Wolling Workers in nineteen eighty-two at Jerusalem Baptist Church located at one fifty-one Lintana Avenue, Trenton, New Jersey, that operated for just over forty years. And whereas, Ms. Sampson is a two-time cancer survivor. Harry promised God, if you spare my life, I will dedicate the rest of my life to giving to others. Ms. Sampson has kept her promise until she could no longer do the heavy lifting herself. And whereas, Ms. Sampson's son, Ryan Blake, started Clara's Heart to honor his mother, and her work are continuing, a giving in the community. Ms. Sampson can be seen every, at every, at every event produced by Clara's Heart LLC, where she still serves in hope with love and compassion. Now therefore, be resolved, at the City Council of the City of Trenton, County of Mercer, the State of New Jersey hereby recognizes Ms. Clara Sampson for over forty years of dedication to the Trenton community. Thank you. No words. Yes, and thank you, thank you, family of service to the academy.
Yes, certainly. Uh, on your call, Council President, would you like to move to the public comment? Uh, the person, certainly, there is a motion. Uh, so, I prefer, perhaps, I will do it by motion, there is no executive session, so... Council President, would you ask for a motion to move to the comment?
The motion to, uh, begin, uh, to comment, sir?
I'll say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose it? Not opposed, if somebody has asked, could you, could you put the word up? Thanks so much. First one on my list I have, my vote, my this? Go ahead, you kind of, President, uh, by the way, personally, all of my members. I want to shout out, like, that, like, every member, or stand and stand again to the place of all their council members in front of us.
Sorry, if you would give your name and your address.
My honor, and this one hundred divisions, great, right, here in New Jersey. Um, I'm standing in front of you today, uh, I have a concern, and it's, uh, some of our members have come to us, uh, our members, contractors have come to us, and complain about the way the paperwork's being handled in the city of, under department inspections. Um, one of the bigger problems we have now is that we don't have a department inspector for the second time in the past few months. And paperwork has been filed, um, not finished, uh, one revision because of that. Uh, it takes a real, real long time to get paperwork through, and I would like to see it changed, you know? We have, uh, we have all this happening right now in safety actions, but it takes a moving forward. We'd like to see the city moving forward to construction, as spoke many, many, many months, um, because of, uh, the time it takes to process the paperwork at the department inspector. They really seem to be, they have one problem inspector at the city, and they want to make a ready-made date off, because the paper is going to file out, it's permits after permits, plans after plans. They hired a inspector that came in like two, three months ago, and he already, he already got, he was in here, uh, not helping us provide it. So he's about to, he was doing, line, line review, okay, that's what we can't probably produce, and, um, and reviews and, and plans and all of that, and, you know, I would tell the city that's a paper, because, you know, if you, if we don't time it, we're going to move the city forward, you know, I have projects sitting there where you, parts, class, you're, I'm going to give you an answer, six or two, that's one of them, six or two divisions, we'll be going back to, of course, a long time for it to, 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 you know, now, the hell with the department, yeah, plastic, you know, this should have taken us, this is a tremendous amount of time, you know? The state only gives to the city, any technical issues, you know, we're going twelve months. The honor of the property, we believe, we're going to go, it's not approached, it's not approached lately, but the others, they said, it's not, it's not, it's not, it's not. But, if we want to have a practice, and I would, I would, but, but, the project of a total, a total work, land, land is real, so, we, the city is, we need help with that. I know that is a matter, but, he probably, maybe, whether it has any help in the whole secondary, it's more inspectable, the city has a right to, we better, we better have, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, the head.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Jamie Gordon, and I'm set to the South Street here in Trenton. It was brought to my attention by several of the bus drivers that have picked up my children in front of my door on South Street. They cannot get down the street because of the parked cars on the very corner. So I was asked several times, I was called one night to ask if it was, if it was okay for my kid to walk up the street to, to the corner of Calhoun. He has autism, and he's eight years old, and we cannot do that. So I had to stay there and walk him up the street. But there's another child that lives on our street, and he's very much here. So there's several people, four buses come down my street for, for my kids. One comes down for that particular kid, and I think there's another one that comes down at the very end for, for a kid. They can't really even make a U-turn to come on the other side to pick the kids up or cross the road, because there's residents there that are parking on that corner. So the buses, all the orange trucks, had very difficult times getting down South Street, when those cars were parked all the way on the corner, where the foxes, I think it is? They used to be?
Yes.
Yeah, all the way on that corner, they cannot turn in that U-turn. And again, in Houston, when they couldn't turn on that side, they would go, go around and come up, they were there, but now, there's people that live on that, that are parking there, recklessly on that corner, and they can't even get there. So, you know, I'm just asking, can there be stop signs, uh, no parking signs put there so in the feet, so the buses won't be able to get down and get the children down safely, so they don't have to walk up to the corner? Thank you.
Um, yeah, can we add someone that does that, please?
Next, the head, it's your Derek Green.
Good evening, Council President, Council members, quick, over the right, it's with here, Derek Green, I look up church, you're a musician, see, right? Uh, I want to first salute and thank all people who honor this, that, and part of our work, our narrative in the city, if you have to tell a story. Uh, newspaper should be, uh, that should be a fun, big story. Again, if we're fighting, if we're tooling this, it seems like everybody pays attention to that, we don't recognize that we are the Catholic Church, you know, until we start to act like it, or, or, so, I want to thank you for telling the stories. Again, uh, Mama Clara is one of my heroes, she chin checked me a number, I used to go out and talk, and she always reminded me, it's never about me, it's about the people who serve, so, to see her being honored, it's, it makes the city better for you. Uh, second point I want to say, Superdollar Law, for your work and your contributions in terms of showing up at public events, our basketball games, our performances at the high schools, it matters to see our leadership to be collected together, sitting together. Uh, the last four years have been a nightmare, and to see our elected officials now working on the same page, moving in the same direction. You can't ask people in the city to move and go together, and you guys, leaders, going to do it, I want to take, take the moment, so, you, that, for doing that, and to continue to keep doing it, because people are watching, whether you know it or not, and they might not say anything, because sometimes you fear coming to the mic, or we've been conditioned only coming with a plan, I want to salute you, that's great work, and I would, I would continue. My second point, my, my third point is, I'm sorry, I was convincing, I want to salute him for where he is, but we need to have a city... but we need to have a civic movement going on, we need to engage and educate and empower our citizens to know who the county executive is, who to know the Democratic Committee people are. Uh, part of our failure here in the city is we only engaged on elected sites, right? And once the election is over, people go back to sleep, but we suffer all year round. So, with Mr. Benson being here, we're not hanging in our own, we need to lay out our children, we need to lay out our demands. He needs to meet us in the middle with a vision, a plan, so we can work together. There's no way in the world we can have a good county executive and not have a great capital city. And the relationship has to be fragmented, you know? I will not be, I will talk about this to you, that becomes part of our failure. Let people go in, do what they do, they've done what they've done, I want to thank you for serving, I wish you all the best. But if Mr. Benson is next up, we need to demand from him to recognize and acknowledge our city and be able to put thank you on that. Last thing, I think we're doing some extensive work with the superintendent, we're ready for a mentoring program in places where all the students who are fighting, uh, so we can address that issue, so I want you to know that we're doing that work in the high school. I'm going to be working with the students who are fighting, and also the parents. Uh, you can sit and talk on Facebook, or if you want to, but if you're not addressing teaching, educating, empowering, the young people have a purpose, a vision, a task plan, and to move themselves forward as I am citizens in the city. Then we're going to continue to succeed, the only thing we can do is to, this is this. Uh, I just wanted to let you know, if you can update, that we're doing that work, and then I can support everything that you do. And I beg you for the sacrifices, so, but, you know.
I have no other, uh, members who can comment, as president, would you like to make a civic comment?
Yes, sir.
Okay, civic comment, move on, uh, I'm sure this is councilwoman evidence.
Councilwoman, this is number one verse, we spot that in that verse. Okay, let's start with the other end.
Certainly, councilwoman, please.
Wow, that's never happened in a grammar school. Thank you very much. Uh, first, I just wanted to thank, uh, Mr. Green for his comments, uh, fully agree with what he's saying. We should never be anyone else's halftime in the community. And unfortunately, that is happening, and good stories, they appear in my colleagues, uh, and folks here are wonderful ones that we continue to tell and will tell as long as anyone else, so I would assure you. Um, so I have just a couple of updates that I want to talk about. Uh, so a few nights ago, we had, uh, family of Bishop Thomas, uh, come and speak regarding a, uh, a memorial, uh, part of that sign, it would be renaming of a street, and I know my family, he has been at the Gonzalez, uh, councilwoman has been at the Gonzalez, and has been working on that also, and I just had, uh, a little reviews that, uh, from what we were told by our streets division traffic, that that would be taken care of with the sign, uh, hopefully in two weeks. Uh, we should see that, um, but it's something that would be all, uh, Phil Strongly, that should happen before. Um, so I want to also talk about speed bumps and speed limit signs, which, uh, throughout our city, uh, things that are desired by a lot of residents. And I just wanted to share since, uh, we have, um, you know, mentioned earlier, Clara's heart. Uh, several months ago, some of my colleagues and I were, uh, fortunate to help volunteer for a hack, a coke giveaway, back at the, uh, rescue mission on Newman Street. Well, a lot of we happen to be helping Clara's heart in a great mission, and Mr. Gregory and his mother. Uh, several of us were almost struck by speeding vehicles. And on a daily basis, uh, at three o'clock, uh, even earlier, we have, uh, a lot of homeless folks in Trenton who gather, actually, especially hoping to get a bed for the night. So, uh, we're trying to work with, uh, public works department. When the weather gets warm, they will be putting some speed bumps out there, and also, uh, some street signs. And if those are things that anyone want, and they're good, please, uh, come, please do speak to us, our council members, because all of us want to be a city safe, I promise you. Forchepires, so, um, as a problem, I have many groups come across the country. Uh, we have very severe problem in our city, in certain neighborhoods that are walkthrough neighborhoods, where people having their Amazon packages, processors, packages stolen, and several, uh, more than several, the constituents, but that helps me save the city community. Um, we are very large in middle class, and if people order things, they may forget, no matter what. We can also afford to have to play Amazon companies, or the order company, to try to get replacements. So, one of the things I'm looking forward to do in the future is work with my colleagues, or our council, and our law department, uh, to see if there are any of these, uh, we can, uh, bring forth, maybe with coordinates, et cetera. And I know it may all be federal issues, so that's a difficult thing, but if there's anything we can do as a council, we should do, because that's a terrible problem. Also, uh, just want to say that, um, I'm really proud of my, uh, of my council colleagues and, uh, that tonight, uh, we'll take a review of Phil's members positions for zoning board. It's a really important board for our city, and in the past, it's been hard to have a full complement, so we don't have enough members for meeting, uh, just to have seven, you don't have to be on four. So, that's something that's really good, we are, we have a couple of alternate positions available, so if there are any volunteers who would like to be considered for an alternate position, please do send our city clerk, Mr. Garcia, an email, and express your interest. There's also some openings on landmarks, uh, board, as well as trying board, and what we do is unique once a month, and the really integral range our city's moving toward, that our city has proper development, and also takes into considerations of the people who live in the city. So, please do consider that, we have one area bill, which, um, which really, really helps our city. And then, um, finally, um, regarding, uh, what Ms. Gordon, uh, mentioned earlier, I know she's going to have, uh, she's having a conversation, uh, about going already. Uh, those are things where if someone's parking to the corner, or city can solve, uh, we're particularly putting signs that say, no parking to the corner. It's a problem for out of city, particularly where we have corner stores. So, if you have that problem in your neighborhood, please do reach out to us on council. Also, reach out to Mr. Anthony Santora, uh, he's the head of our traffic division for the city, because the only way we can solve these problems is if we identify them. And a lot of times, it's really great to have a citizen and a council person double team. So, um, I just wish you all a great weekend, hopefully, uh, it will be good weather coming soon. And, uh, please do come back to zoning and, sorry, to city council, gosh, fourteen years on zoning, still get used to it. Um, because we love seeing you guys here, and it really helps move our city forward. Thank you.
Councilwoman Harrison.
Um, I first would like to start off by thanking the, uh, people who are honored tonight. This city is what it is because of the hard work of the people in the community that are always giving their, uh, their effort to help the seniors, to help the kids, to move this city forward. And, um, they're a blessing to the city, and, uh, we should thank every day of it. I mean, it's, without them, I mean, there's a lot of people that would be suffering with food, clothes. Uh, every group that was here tonight is all about you, we're special people in this great city. Let's see, from, uh, Mr. Green, you talked about the Trent High basketball team, uh, it was great to see all of us there. Um, but there was something that me and you, uh, had a little problem with, and I gotta say, six minutes left in the game, you do not leave. You stand there, and you clap, and you support those men, those young men who are giving their all, all their heart. When the game's over, and you're walking out, you stay there, you clap, you give them the respect, they battled hard all year long, all year long, and they deserve it. Do not leave, six minutes left in the game, walk out, when those kids are still battling on that ground. That is disrespect, disrespect to those young men who are battling. Every sport in this city, we don't do that in this city. We stand up there, and we give them the respect that they deserve. And, uh, to DCA, I want to say thank you. Want to thank you for holding my previous council colleagues accountable, and they should be paying those fines. Because when you don't pass the budget, and you're on this council, and you're supposed to do your job, then guess what, you hold them accountable, and you make them pay for not doing your job. So, that's all I have to say, thank you all for coming out here tonight, and look for brighter days in the future of the city, thank you so much.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Thank you, everyone, for being here this evening. First, I just want to send prayers out to the county, thank me once again, and, um, believe in Mr. Muhammad for the rest of the day. Congratulations to everyone who's honored, um, personally, I know most of you, and we all know the work that you're doing, and we want to say thank you for what you do in our community. So, Mr. Hernandez, um, yes, we are aware of that, and someone else brought it up, and it is an issue because it's keeping our business as standstill, so we definitely need to figure that out. Um, and Ms. Gordon, thank you for sharing that, I think Mr. Cherry went over, and maybe, please help you with that issue. And Mr. Green, of course, we know, we thank you all the time for sharing the information that you have, and as far as the mentor program, we all know that that's something that's needed, so anybody that, um, you can give assistance in that, can let me know. And I just wanted to share one announcement, as far as, um, for some of our people who are looking to purchase homes, there is a grant, I think it's a ten million, I have some information to share with whoever is interested, or knows the one that wants to purchase a home. This is not a first-time homeowner, buyer program, but it is a first-generation home buyer. So, that means if any individual whose parents or guardians never owned a home during the homeowner's lifetime, they can qualify for a lot of funds and help to purchase their first home. So, we do know for anyone that's interested, I do have some entry copies, and I'll really add them in front for anyone that is interested. And thank you all for being here this evening.
Councilwoman Figueroa.
Good evening, everybody, um, I echo my council members' sentiments, um, pleased to see you guys all here tonight, um. And I'm just going to keep saying, yeah, I want to see people continue to come to this meeting, to continue to engage, to continue to tell us, you know, what's going on. And, I mean, I get emails time to time again from, from constituents, um, in my board, and you do getting so much done for them, whether it's garden's trash pickup, whether they're getting stop signs moved, or four-way sidewalks, or what have you. Uh, the work is getting done, um, and not in a snail's pace, so I'm actually pleased about that. Uh, I do see motivation in all of my council members, um, to do the right thing for the city, and to move us forward in the direction that we need to be in. And as, um, Mr. Green stated, you know, we are the capital city, and we need to take pride in that, and we need to definitely show up, show up all the time. Um, I want to say that I was pleased to be able to, um, attend a press conference for Carla Sullivan Thompson, they're Trent firefighters, and they were honored by the mayor and council members, um, last week. And it was just, it was just an honor to see the two of them together, that they are father, son, I mean, mother and son, and the bravery, and going into a fire together, and you have to, they, it's not just looking out for your brother, it's looking out for your child and your mother. You're, you know, worrying the entire time, are they going to be okay? So, I wanted definitely, um, send my love to them once again, um, they're doing an amazing job. Um, Mr. Hernandez, you are such a proponent of this community, you give back, do ample community service, you're always lending, um, a hand, you belong with the blood members association, and, um, your concerns are warranted. And I do hope that we are able to get the expected, the needed, significant trends, because I know we are lacking in multiple targets. Um, as, uh, David Seale said on Tuesday night, so, um, your statement was maybe clear, and I do hope that we are able to rectify, um, that issue. So, you know, we can keep you in business here in the city of Trenton, and you can keep giving back. Um, I also want to say that I was pleased to be able to attend the Trent Police Department Citizens Academy. The first session was last night, myself and council, um, vice president, Chris Feliciano, we were there cutting up. And, um, it seems to be, it seems that it's going to be a really good class, because I think it's our duty, um, to understand the inside track of what our law enforcement officers actually do, what they go through, what goes through their minds, what they're faced up against, um, in the streets trying to protect and serve us. Um, I think that, uh, the lieutenant who was teaching the class last night, he made, he, he made a very interesting quote. Nobody hates bad cops worse than good cops. And I think that that is something that we should take with us when we call the cops, and now we're upset that we called dead, and now they're not doing everything that they need to be doing in our minds. Um, so I think that, I've only been in one class so far, there's ten classes, but from day one, I would suggest people to sign up for that free academy. All it takes is just a little bit of effort on your part. Um, again, congratulations to everybody who was honored tonight, um, you guys are all doing an amazing job. You guys are the reason why we shine the way we do at times, and we can, we can see you guys shining over some of the bad. You guys are definitely, you know, making that change, you know, in the community. So, please, continue to be great, continue to work for our communities, um, thank you guys all. Um, so other than that, um, I just wanted to say, um, oh, Mr. Green, the high school mentorship program has a wonderful idea, thank you for that. Um, and other than that, I know that the date's kind of far out, but April twenty-third, um, the Latino Merchants Association is hosting, uh, an event with New Jersey Family Theater, where all, um, all individuals under the age of nineteen, give things like vaccinations, uh, mental health assessments, hospitalization, dental services, and the like. So, I know it's one for us, I would remind, I would remind everybody again, uh, elevator dates, but April twenty-third, uh, from twelve to five, at three seventy-five, Morris Avenue, the Latino Merchants Association's, um, headquarters. And finally, I just want to say, it's going to help me for me, quite frankly. And I just really want to say that I just cried the last lawsuit of my opposition trying to unseat me. And I understand that a lot comes with, when you run for office, and you don't want to lose. Nobody wants to lose, and I, there's, there's a lot that, that comes with that position. Um, but it's been a rough week, but I'm here, I'm here to stay, guys, I'm here to do the work. Um, I'm right here, I have my seat, and just thank you all for being here.
Vice President Feliciano.
Okay, Madam President, we're not, we're not talking that way. Again, we're going to go back to the other way. Good evening, everyone, thank you so much for coming out to be here with us tonight. Again, congratulations to all the honories, right, and, and for everyone else that's out there doing the work. Note this, if you know of an individual or a group that is doing phenomenal work, you can contact us to nominate that person, and bring them to our attention, so that we can know about them, right? All we need is their bio, what are they doing, and we have no problem uplifting people in the city, right? So, it's not just limited to us here, what the thing is, you can give us the information. We want to hear from each and every one of you, right? Because you'll see things that we do not see, see people that we may not see. Just a quick update, I was supposed to be speaking this Saturday at hub thirteen at an event. I am not going to be speaking at that event, because I just got word yesterday from my daughter, that she's receiving an honor, uh, an award at her university on Saturday, at the Tommy Jesus Senior, coming out today. I took one, one hundred reward. Um, we did go to the Trent Police City Academy last night. It was an exciting time, it's my second go-around going back. I did go before to the fir, to the last class, but because of COVID, we had to stop after session number two. So, I'm excited, and here's what I want to bring to the forefront. There's going to be a simulation for us at the next meeting, right? And it's going to be taking us through what it's like to be in ci, different situations as an officer with a weapon. So, when I heard it, I was like, this would be something interesting for my council colleagues to actually sit in as well. So, can we give a special class for us to do that? And they said, absolutely, all we have to do is say yes. And so, I was bringing it to you all to say this, one, because of certain laws and stuff, we can't talk outside. We're, we're here, so I'm telling you on that, and they, they, they're ready for us to go ahead and do this. Two, for the community to understand that we are really looking to do this together, right? And so, as we go to this quest, as we go to different forms and things separately, we are looking to bring each other in collectively, so that we can understand exactly what's happening, so we can bring the news to you all. If there's something of concern, we can let you know, maybe something that you didn't think of, something that we didn't think of, right, so that we all have a better understanding together. Um, I work very closely with Melissa Tanger, Tracer Success, a wonderful nonprofit organization. Um, I'm proud to say that, uh, we were able to bring the Tracer Success boutique to the high school, right? Uh, it's been great, it's been running well. She and I have had a conversation, uh, along with our principal and everything. So, for those that have asked, we are looking into a male component, so don't think that we will even the boys out. We are looking to try to. We are looking to try to do something to help the boys at the school as well, right? So all I want to say is when we get it up and running, because it will come to fruition, that when we ask for suits or clothing for our young men, please don't hesitate, right? If you don't fit it anymore, if you have a clean, give it to us so that we can help these kids so that they are ready to go. Shout out to the Trent Street team, right? Derek, we spoke about the mentorship programing at the high school. Trent Street team is getting building. They are doing the work. They are. We just saw Tosh put a sign up on the gate at the corner at the end of the street that said, "This is a designated safe street zone. We will not have X, Y, Z." I love that. And so what that is, is people doing the work, bringing it to the forefront, claiming our territory and saying, "Not on our watch." No, not on our watch. So I want to shout out to Trent Street team for them being in the streets, for them being in the high school, for them doing the work for real, for them loving the city and our children enough to say, "We're not just gonna talk about it. We are in here and we are doing, doing the work." And I'm happy that that is being done. I think that that is it. Everybody else addressed everyone else's concerns. Just know, Mr. Hernandez and Ms. Gordon, we want to address it, right? Even if it's seven times over, everyone's been taking over these votes as to what is going on. So, you know, Mr. Cruz and company can get ready for a more large bill of emails and requests from Mr. Marcin. So I want to thank everybody for coming out with us tonight. Wonderful weekend, and thank you.
Councilwoman Lepus.
Can you hang here one minute? We're coming. I just want to say thank you to all of the honorees for all of your services to the community, to the city of Trenton, in all of your respective ways. Everything that you do is absolutely necessary. When you see a need, feel it. And that's something that I personally believe in, so thank you, congratulations. So being recognized for all of your hard work and dedication. I also want to thank the National Society of High Jewish Catholics for donating fifty dresses to the Fatherador's Dance. Councilwoman Feliciano, another proud member. And I also want to thank the Fathers and Sisters for donating to the Fathers as well. Miss Fatherador's Dance, I have the privilege and honor of hosting for the second year in a row on behalf of Fathers and Sisters, I did a celebration. They invited me because they always want a woman involved in that group, you know, with the folk. And then just look at the little girls have a touch of women around, you know? Because the mothers are not allowed in the dance. They're stopped and steered and they get upset by that, but once they see that they're going through, they feel more comfortable. So I'm happy to fulfill that type of, you know, need for the mothers to ease them into it. But more so for the Fathers so that they have their differences with their daughters. And that I appreciate because I'm a daddy's daughter and girl. And last year was our very first dance day ever. We never had that growing up when I was a little girl. So we even had that honor last year. And it was a growth, you have to see, the thirty-three-year-old who heard Father Dance and I was thinking, I was anxious, to be honest with you. So it's a wonderful event and I think that it doesn't get enough recognition in the Fathers and Sisters, from the little girls' side. I also want to bring attention and, oh, before I move on. I also want to say congratulations to Officer Lady Pea on being recognized by Trent Police Department for the national honor this month. She is someone that I'm. She is an officer who goes beyond all the duty and the dignity to always be her around at all types of events. I met her a couple of years ago, went through Operation Rejoice, Trent Police Department partnered with us on community cleanup and outreach issues. And she was out there every other Saturday, the entire year that we did it. So I want to say thank her personally for that as well, on behalf of Operation Rejoice. I want to bring some attention to the City Academy again for the other sixty-six months. Each morning I see like reckless child endangerment. Parents driving their kids off on the high side of the street, middle of traffic, they continue to walk across the lane to school, right in front of vehicles. And I know we talk about it, there can be just posts, but oftentimes I've seen other officers around and these people whose parents were not cool over, for putting their children in harm's way. And I know that sounds harsh, but you could not do that in these surrounding towns, just without any delay with it. So we need to have that same kind of energy here protecting our kids. Because our own kids are trying to get my drugs. With that being said, we have about thirty crossing the road officials open. If you know anyone, please direct them to the Police Department to apply for permission. It's only two hours in the morning, two hours in the afternoon. We need some help getting our kids to the functioning buildings in these neighborhoods, thank you. And I want, thank you.
Councilwoman President.
Thank you, Mr. Marcin. Thank you, everyone, for being out here this evening. I love it, our colleagues, they just have an amazing difference. This is for you, it's about you. So we thank you for being here. I would ask that before the evening, we have members of directors here that can have a conversation with Manny, Mr. Hernandez, excuse me, in the back, about the department, especially. We need our sleep cover. And I don't, I have no ability to be working, we are laughing, we're trying to give the budget down so we can get the employees in position. It is, it is a, it's not a conscious decision for us not to be fully equipped and it is something that we are destined to do our best to work on. We are doing our best to work with our mayor. I wanted to address this, Jamie, that most of our issue is a, is close to me with a child who has difficulty being able. So, and then something of thank you, Director, we were actually going to have a conversation with her. And I'm sure that we addressed signs or everything that we need to get our children safe and especially those who don't have the advantage of having the mobility or even cognitive ability of others to. We have to do our best to accommodate them as best they can. So just like the President said, there'll be a bunch of you in there going down. We'll drive them nuts a little bit, but they know that it's because we are trying to do our best to do our job. Freedom, I just thank you for your passion. You are just an incredible individual and I just thank you for all that you do in our community, for our citizens, for our children, especially. I think this is my first reaction, realized that it was you that was on the microphone. I'm like, oh, microphone, okay! So I love your energy, I also love your tact, but especially that you express for others, so thank you for that. And one of the things I want to say, the, everyone that was honored to receive me, all have one thing in common, one thing that happened before, service. Everybody living here, she alive is not just about children, it's about somebody else and seeing the need, feeling the need. So thank you for that. And I do want to acknowledge all the moms that was crying, Mel, I see, maybe thanks to Mel, they care, same in the back. So Mel, Tara, Joe, to all the family, thank you for what you do. Just to add to the thing, I have one big story, Tara called. My husband and I one evening, and it was because there were a bunch of seniors that were being displaced. And she just talked about it, she got out there, then she did something, and then she made a phone call telling us that they were out there. And that's the kind of heart that we need. People are gonna sit around and say, woo, there's a problem. Somebody go fix it. No, if you have a problem, come to us with a solution to it. Don't just bring a problem, bring a solution with it. And so I appreciate, I appreciate your heart, I appreciate your compassion, and all of you. All of you, all have worked with you. The ladies, them, you guys, the way you know, sent, you know, Mrs. Clara. Everybody who has been tested her has been touched by her in one way or another, either directly or indirectly. And that young man, yeah, I mean, I'm just blown away by him. I wish he was still here, we can acknowledge him. We give him all the praise that he really deserves, but he is just off the chain and I am so proud of him. And that's us, that's our child, and I'm glad to see that his parents were up here. So folks can see, moms and dads support each other. But folks, you have Trent in a bad name, and those are the shining stars that we want to see, we want to know. So I thank you for being here, I thank all of you for being here this evening. Let's see. Thank you for bringing the issues to our attention. We can't do anything about it, we don't know anything about it. So thank you for bringing up the concerns to us. I promise that people too small, we can just try and guide them, trust me, and I appreciate our writers for being here always. So thank you for addressing this, or they are hearing. They are the ones that can address it. Thank you for that. Thank you for our council for being out here. Thank you for our clerk who can get all of us all down. Thank you so very much, Mr. Marcin, and your team, your young, amazing team that has suffered through all of, they have endured, we'll say, over the last couple of years. Thank you for sticking it out, thank you for not giving up. And I appreciate each and every single last one, everyone who has worked here in the city. Thank you, thank you. I want to say that we need you every one of our means, families, et cetera, in our community. Thank you, thank you for what you do. If you don't care at any time, on the day, just don't be under too much pressure when you come in. I want to say thank you to my colleagues, thank you guys for your passion. You guys are new, you're trying to get this new life, but I'm so grateful that we are working together. There are no reals, there are no blue views. Everybody understands, everybody is one whole, one voice, one vote. And I appreciate that, and I understand, and be respectful to one another and honoring each other. So I'm grateful that it helps us to move our agenda along, move our city forward together. My announcements are that Captain Harry Blackhawk is going to be meeting on Saturday, March 18th, from 10 to 12, where you can hear, again, where you have Dan Benz in the meeting, get a hold of the years of those who are in office. You want to give, give anything, you want to talk to them about something, they want your vote? They want your vote? Come out and talk to them. This is a fine opportunity, we need just that. The address is 42 Huntington Avenue, Saturday, March 18th, from 10 to 12. I have started a fight in North Central Trenton speech. We are about to lift Trenton's flag that we have not seen before. We are taking over places from, I'll keep on that, and enjoying it at the same time. Trenton, that place is from Trentonian, Dr. Bill, and we're going to lift it up out of you in that paper, and I'm excited about that. So if you have young folks with thirty or fifteen on you, they're going to be writing their own stories so that the story without Trenton's youth is written and it is written correctly. And they're looking, they want to write it. So that's going on. And I am going to be doing this now until I am no longer sitting up here, whether it's in the presence or any other seat, if I love this. And it is the city of Trenton's mission, sacred, and I'm going to do it until it becomes a part of every single person within my ear, really, that's in my wheel shop. And in recognizing that the people of Trenton have made us guardians of the public trust, we are committed to govern with integrity and fiscal responsibility to seek excellence in the city's operations and to serve all of the city's people with respect and compassion. Thank you, everyone, for coming out. This is what we are about, this is what we're going to do, we will live up to this. Thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Lepus, hold business.
Yes, please proceed.
Congresswoman, if you have anything to adopt, if you're going straight to communications positions, Councilwoman President, I ask for a motion to approve communications position, please.
Motion, second.
Roll call. Councilwoman Lepus. Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Keever.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Councilwoman President.
Yes.
Motion, Gary. You want to report this? Councilwoman President, you want to ask for a motion to approve the reports?
Motion.
Roll call. It's Councilwoman Lepus.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Keever.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Councilwoman President.
Yes.
Motion, Gary. Resolutions, Councilwoman President, the consent agenda is supposed to be here. I do have an idea that is pulled by legislation from the consent agenda, that's Resolution 99. And it will pledge to act the consent agenda, Resolution 106, that's for zoning board appointments. I understand the Councilwoman Williams may have a specific request for that.
Yeah, just a couple of corrections for this amendment. So alternate number one, Jeanne Morris would be qualified upon the Trent Center Board of Jessica Tico, inspired by Councilwoman Jennifer Sue Williams, as a full member to end June 30th, 2026. And then in the space provided, alternate number two would be, I should be a full member. And that would be Ruth Jackson. Number three, which would be alternate number one, would be Amy Kidler, there. And then alternate number two would be Carmen Rodriguez.
Got it.
And that would be it.
Understood. And will the council, if there is a motion?
Motion, second.
Roll call. Councilwoman Lepus.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Keever.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Councilwoman President.
Yes.
Motion, Gary. Resolution 106 would include the consent agenda, that was the 99, it's a motion for. I understand there is, roll call for consent agenda. Consent agenda, Resolution 2030, that's 078, 079, 081, 082, 083, 084, 086, 087, 088, 089, 090, 091, 92, 93, 94, 95, 96, 98, 99, 100, 101, 102, 103. Oh, I apologize. Go straight down the line, 104, 101, thank you, 102, 103, and 104, including, and 106. Councilwoman President, you want to ask for a motion to approve consent agenda?
Sure. Second.
Roll call.
Excuse me.
Sorry.
Um, I don't know if it's time to say this. I, I'm, I'm, I'm with the consent agenda, but I'm accusing myself of one of that. I approve this, with your recusal from 2307.
Thank you, Councilwoman President.
2307.
Thank you.
Would you prefer, uh, my husband, would you prefer you roll call for 2307?
I, I, I would recommend that, for purposes of that, if that party is intact, just remove that roll call. Starting with the removal of 078, to be moved to roll call, or the first roll call resolution. Motion on the board, second. Move to roll, uh, roll call for that motion again. As Councilwoman Lepus, I heard you asked for it.
Second.
Uh, Councilwoman Feliciano. Against the second, thank you.
So roll call.
Uh, I, uh, my, Councilwoman, are you going, um, sorry, you got it, sorry.
Yeah, so we've already done, we've, you're down with consent agenda, so what we're asking now is you're, he's doing roll call now, or whether you want to agree with your call number that you move.
I said, yes. Okay, noted. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison. Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President, President.
You just, Councilwoman, you, you say, Kim.
Councilwoman Figueroa Denver, I apologize. Okay, so, thanks, Council President, President.
Yes.
Motion, Gary. Moving to roll call resolutions, uh, first roll call resolution, that is, is 2307, Resolution 106, appropriation of $100,000 of funds allocated to city Trenton for the American Rescue Plan Act, or 2021, city Daxnet, city area United Way, great worst account, for the refurbishment and distribution of personal computers to Trenton residents. Hold on.
Second.
Move the second call roll. Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Felicia. Councilwoman Figueroa Denver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Council, Councilwoman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President, President.
Yes.
Motion, Gary. Roll call, resolutions, Resolution 23 dash 073, Resolution 105, Resolution 105, Council, City of Trenton, 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 City of Trenton,
Do you need a motion?
Is there a motion?
Yes. Second.
Motion, second, move the second call roll, Councilwoman, I'm sorry, who's the second? I don't know.
Either, uh, either Congress, Congress, or whatever.
Thank you. Uh, roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Felicia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Denver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President, President.
Yes.
Motion, Gary. Resolution 23 dash 074, Resolution 105, Southern Awards Competition Claim in Matter of Liberty of Hostels versus City of Trenton, Claim Petition Number 110 dash 14410, in Claim Amount of $5,799.6, including attorney fees and costs.
Motion, second.
Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Felicia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Denver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President, President.
Yes.
Motion, Gary. Resolution 23 dash 075, Resolution 105, Southern Awards Competition Claim in Matter of Stanley Smart versus City of Trenton, Claim Petition Number 2015-29712, in Claim Amount of $20,900.6, including attorney fees and costs.
Motion, second.
Move the second call roll. Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Felicia.
Q.
Noted. Councilwoman Figueroa Denver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President, President.
Yes.
Motion, Gary. Resolution 23 dash 076, Resolution 105, Southern Awards Competition Claim in Matter of Annie Cole, Annie Cole versus City of Trenton, Claim Petition Number 2011-25636, in Claim Amount of $10,900.6, including attorney fees and costs. Is there a motion?
Motion, second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Felicia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Denver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison.
Yes.
And Councilwoman, Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Council President, President.
Yes.
Motion, Gary. Resolution 23 dash 077, Resolution 105, Southern Awards Competition Claim in Matter of Ronald Dyers to use versus City of Trenton, Claim Petition Number 2014 dash 18854, in Claim Amount of $33,843.6, including attorney fees and costs.
Motion, second.
Noted. Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Felicia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Denver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President, President.
Yes.
Motion, Gary. Resolution 23 dash 085, Resolution 105, Paying to Southern Competition Education to Henry J. Austin Health Center for Provisions of Comprehensive Primary Healthcare Services to Underinsured and Uninsured Residents of the City of Trenton for $259,000. So roll.
Second.
Second by, first by Harrison. And second by, so.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Felicia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Denver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President, President.
Yes.
Motion, Gary. Resolution 23 dash 105, Resolution 105, Paying for Contractor of the Yerney Street Group Incorporated on 35 Henley Road, Henley, New Jersey, awarded on an emergency basis for the demolition of 58, 60, 62, and 64 South County, St. James, Trenton, Jersey, and the amount amounts of seed $105,000.
Motion, second.
Councilwoman, roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Felicia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Denver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President, President.
Yes.
Motion, Gary. Resolution 23 dash 106, uh, the Liberty Act of the F.O.S., I think, or the other resolutions, except that, that's pending, the resolution, uh, we want to warn that this is first agreed in the dossier. We have ordinance 23 dash 006, ordinance amended, amended to dash 1, and to dash 29, to go to City of Trenton.
Motion, second.
Move by, Council President, President, second by, first President, thank you. Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Felicia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Denver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President, President.
Yes.
Motion, Gary. Ordinance 23 dash 007, ordinance amended supplement, Trenton Municipal Code, Section 8316, move to council.
Motion, second.
Move the second call roll. Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Felicia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Denver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President, President.
Yes.
Motion, Gary. Resolution 23 dash 008, ordinance providing for the Defense and Protection of City Trenton Fishermen Employees.
What? Motion, second.
Second, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Felicia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Denver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President, President.
Yes.
Motion, Gary. Ordinance 23 dash 009, ordinance amended supplement in Section 150 dash 13, May, City of Trenton, Municipal Code, related fines and penalties for libelary violations. Is there a motion?
Motion, second.
Move the second call roll. Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Felicia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Denver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President, President.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Gonzalez, I have a question, I think Council, um, President, President, had a question about one of them, was this?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a quick, one, one that we did for the comment, uh, we amended it to five minutes, right? Why don't we just, okay, that's, okay, thank you.
Okay, in order to, um, to 23 dash 10, ordinance amended supplement in Trenton Municipal Code, Section 8316, move to the. Is there a motion?
One, second.
One, um, question?
Sure.
So, we were just having some, uh, woman, maybe a few have Thursday, I think, this was a page, and Wednesday, mine has Wednesday.
Is that one of these, or is it? I thought, yeah, I thought, that's, that's, we'll say, over by Wednesday. And that is already correct with the original, is there, uh, any other additions or stuff? Here's our roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Felicia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Denver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President, President.
Yes.
Motion, Gary. Ordinance 23 dash 11, ordinance amended supplement in Trenton Municipal Code, Section 8316, move to council.
Motion, second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Felicia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Denver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President, President.
Yes.
Motion, Gary. Ordinance 23 dash 12, ordinance amended supplement in Trenton Municipal Code, Section 8316, move to council.
Motion, second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Felicia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Denver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President, President.
Yes.
Motion, Gary. Ordinance 23 dash 13, ordinance amended supplement in Trenton Municipal Code, Section 8316, move to council.
Motion, second.
I'm sorry, was it second?
Yes.
Noted. Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Felicia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Denver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President, President.
Yes.
Motion, Gary. Ordinance 23 dash 14, ordinance amended supplement in Trenton Municipal Code, Section 8316, move to council.
Motion, second.
Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Felicia. Councilwoman Figueroa Denver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President, President.
Yes.
Motion, Gary. The world of words, Council President. I believe we are, because I know, I could have one, my, uh, Council, Councilwoman, Council President, sorry. I understand there may be a motion to disable the resolution? Does he wish to disable the resolution?
Yes, please.
It's Resolution, uh, I believe, when you discussed Resolution 70.
Yes, um, this is second.
Resolution 70 is the one that, uh, is, uh, 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 you did a motion, I believe the motion was on table, is there a resolution?
Motion.
Is there a second? I have a motion to, Council President, is there a second? Here we run that motion fails. If I, if I have a second, then the motion fails.
I'm just, I'm really, 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 crush it.
If, well, if you have a second, then the motion fails to die, or may take.
Okay, second.
As it is, I agree, I agree, the, uh, the may take. Uh, Council President, I have, for, uh, for the mission, unless it's, I mean, solicitor, or anyone else. Um, you want to ask for a motion to, Gary?
Motion, second.